This is the September, I forgot what day it is, September 7th, meeting of the Shrewsbury Planning Board. We'll get right into our agenda. We don't have any minutes to approve this evening, so we'll jump down to item three, to review and sign the bills. We have one bill outstanding, MDM Transportation, eleven thousand fifty-five dollars for one seven Maple Ave. Does anybody have any questions? Somebody make a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, or voted? You sign that. Go. Item four is board member comments. Does anybody have any comments this evening?
No.
Mr. Chair, I'm not a board member, but I did have a comment if I could add in. I just wanted to mention that Planning Department members will be attending the SNEPA Conference. That's the Southern New England American Planning Association Conference. It's the one annual big conference. This year, it's October 5th and 6th in New Haven, Connecticut, which coincidentally is also our October Planning Board meeting. So, we're still kind of coordinating schedules, but we may be requesting a remote participation for that meeting, so.
Okay.
Just so you're aware.
Well, I'm thinking about it. We have our alternate member got appointed finally. And he's here this evening, Matt Kastner. He'll be sitting in on the special permits and site plan, right? Site plan special permits.
Correct.
Okay. You're welcome. And you're gonna sit with us tonight, I think, on our last hearing. Okay. Okay, next order of business is meetings and hearings. We have a new public meeting, guiding fifty-one Bayview Drive duplex, request for a de minimis change. Waterview Realty Trust. Is there anybody here representing him? Would you like to come forward, just tell us what you'd like to do? Introduce yourself for the record, please.
My name's Bob Hadden.
Russell DeGobing.
So, we're the owners of Waterview Realty Trust.
Okay.
Which owns the property, which we actually both reside in, in two separate halves of the duplex. So, we had had the Planning Department come out for a final walk around. And one thing they found is that the original plan had a set of stairs that was a common set of stairs off of the decks in the back that led to down below. Through the construction process, we both said, yeah, we'll probably never use those stairs. And talked to the Building Department, asked them if those stairs were necessary. The Building Department said, no, you can eliminate them. So, we eliminated them. So, the Planning Department said we still needed to come back for the de minimis change before this board, before they could sign off. And then, they also wanted the as-built, which we've provided.
Okay. Good.
Yep.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
No.
No?
Seems pretty short and dry.
Okay. You just vote?
Yep.
Okay. So, we just, you get a motion to approve the de minimis change?
Right.
So moved.
Second.
Second. We have a motion, second. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, or voted? There you go.
Thank you.
Very good.
Also, as far as getting the final sign off, is that this board, or is that the Planning Department?
They'll be through our department, so we'll issue the letter probably tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And then, upload that into the permit.
Okay. Because Concom was waiting for you guys before they would sign off as well.
Right.
Okay. Perfect. Awesome. Thank you.
They'll be notified.
Have a good night.
Yep.
Next order of business is another new public meeting, storage use in the limited industrial district, administrative site plan review. Anybody here from, is it Valmet?
Sorry?
Is it Valmet?
Uh, no, this is the Four Commerce Road.
Oh, that's right.
Yep.
I keep getting that backwards on here. Anybody here, Four Commerce Road?
I'll give a brief presentation in lieu of that. So, the proposed use here, this is administrative site plan review. Typically, this is actually done at the staff level, but with our online permitting system, we do allow, we do have this section that normally that gets forwarded to the board for their comments, you know, rather informally, but this is kind of our due process, so we're able to look at these. And essentially, the process would be that it comes to the board, we provide comments, and then the building inspector ultimately issues the administrative plan. The action proposed here is for primarily an industrial contractor's yard use on Four Commerce Road. The property is existing industrial and surrounded by primarily industrial uses. The proposal does include fenced, chain link fence with screening, as well as vegetative buffer. There's no real site work or utilities proposed, as it's just a storage yard. And they did provide plans showing the materials that they'll be providing. So, if the board has any comments that they'd like to forward to the building inspector, I'm happy to enter those into the permit system. And likewise, we'll follow up with departments that each get notified on that as well.
Building inspector submitted comments already, and the applicant.
She did, and the applicant provided responses to address those. But again, ultimately, it's the building inspector to determine if that's.
But she's off that with her, right?
I mean, we'll see. It's ultimately her to say if that's a satisfactory response. But if there's anything we'd like to add to that, we can. But it's a pretty thorough review.
Sure. Absolutely.
All right. So, you don't need.
Is there a vote on this?
No.
You don't need, we don't need to wait until the next meeting, though. You can take care of this internally?
Yeah, this is just the opportunity to provide comments and then.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Storage, what type of material, storage?
They did have, I believe it was, plastic materials, portlets, and then tractor trailer vehicle storage as well on the site, which is similar to the existing use, which is the tractor trailer vehicle storage.
Okay. Let me write it over. I didn't see anything.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Next order of business is pavement increase or training facility, request for de minimis change. WD Centec Park LLC, it's a new public meeting. Location is fifteen Fortune Boulevard. Is there anybody here? You are here. Good evening.
Good evening. David Kelly with Meridian Associates. About two years ago now, we were before you to do the addition to the Eversource Training Facility up on top of the hill there, seventeen-ish acre parcel. That was completed. And during construction, the Eversource, in an attempt to, you know, make their training facility more usable, wanted a canopy over a portion of their training facility, which had gravel underneath it and various mechanical devices that they practice on and do whatever they do. Now that they've had been using this facility and it's been operational, the gravel's becoming a little bit difficult for them. It's kicking off onto the pavement. So, now they just wanted to put asphalt where the gravel was. The asphalt is below the canopy. That was already approved. So, from a stormwater standpoint, as we know, like with the gas station, the water hits the canopy, goes to the downspout system. And then, the few raindrops that hit the pavement would just sheet fall off to the edge and make their way into the drainage system anyway. When we came before you last year for the de minimis change for the canopy, provided stormwater calc, it showed that the existing stormwater system wasn't impacted by this minor change. It's about ten thousand square feet of area, over seventeen acres. I do the math on that. It's pretty, pretty obvious that it's not going to impact anything. So, we're just here now to pave below what they, when they put the canopy in.
Questions?
No question.
Mr. Collins?
I think that was a pretty good presentation. So, there was comments that were provided by the building inspector. Likewise, the applicant has provided responses to those. You know, primarily, we're looking at just paving under what's existing gravel under the canopy. So, it's a fairly innocuous request.
Yeah, the building inspector comments, a lot of those were looking at this as though it was a new site plan submittal, looking for information about it, but there's three, four hundred feet away on either side. Just the small paving portion of the project is almost two hundred feet from the property lines of our own site. So, some of those planned requirements for site plan or submittal weren't shown on these, obviously.
Seems pretty simple.
Yeah.
Are you ready to vote on this? Can you vote on this?
I think so.
Okay. So, we'd be voting to allow paving under the canopy?
Yeah, to approve the de minimis change request for paving under the canopy.
Right.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me?
Move approval.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any other discussions? No? Okay. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Before I forget. Okay, our next starter of business is a new public hearing. You have a proposed battery energy storage special permit, site plan approval of Town of Shrewsbury and Selco at six to eight Worthington Avenue. Decision deadline is ninety days from the close of the hearing. We have a representative from Selco here. Yes, good evening.
Chris, do I have to read this?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Forget about that.
The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, September 7th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Selkman's Meeting Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Ave, Shrewsbury, to hear the application of Selco 100 Maple Ave, Shrewsbury, for site plan approval by the Planning Board to allow for the construction and installation of battery energy storage. The site plan approval is required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7F3. The proposed development is shown on plans entitled Shrewsbury B E S S Two in One Sheet, dated January 5th, 2023, prepared by DeLorean Power, 1201 Wilson Boulevard, Arlington, Virginia. The subject property is located upon property six eight Worthington Ave, southern of Boston Turnpike, Westerly Worthington Ave, inconsistent whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 32, plots 414000. A copy of the application and plans may be seen in the Office of Planning and Economic Development at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Ave, Shrewsbury, and on the Planning Board website at www.shrewsburyma.gov/905-meetingmaterials.
Great. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patrick Collins, representing Selco. Just gonna briefly introduce Shrewsbury's first proposed utility scale battery storage project. This is in partnership with DeLorean Power. They are not in attendance tonight. They will be able to attend in a future meeting when they'll have final engineering drawings and designs that we can discuss technical details about. But I can just briefly describe the purpose of the project and the location, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
So, the location is on Worthington Ave. It's currently vacant site. We think it's a good location for battery storage. It's a former National Grid substation site. So, it's all trap rock. It will be adjacent to our existing Logan Substation. And the area will be screen fenced. We are also planning on installing DC fast chargers in an adjacent parcel that will be open to the public. But that is a separate project. But basically, the purpose of the system will be for peak shaving. Energy use is not uniform throughout the day, so we have peaks and valleys. And on a hot day like today, this battery would be dispatched to reduce Shrewsbury's load. And it would result in a lot of wholesale energy savings for Selco. And that can help stabilize rates for our customers and help keep rates low. And we expect that the savings over the twenty-year partnership with DeLorean would be about ten million dollars. And there's no direct emissions with battery storage. It's not a generating asset. We just simply charge it off-peak and discharge it during peaks. And we've been in discussion with the fire department about safety, fire prevention and mitigation. And this technology is pretty state-of-the-art. And we've also been in discussion with the building department. So, I guess that's, I do have some visuals here, if you're interested in any of the equipment. But I guess that's it.
Sure. Do you have anything you can put on the computers, up on the screens?
Yeah, how would I do that, Chris?
Either you can join the Google Meet, or if there's, I can pull up the site plan that was provided, if that is useful.
Yeah, that would work, yeah.
So, are these gonna function similar, like peaking plants? Or anything, is there gonna be batteries?
Correct, yeah.
Any question? No? No? How much of this site are they gonna cover?
So, you can see the site plan here. Basically, the whole parcel that is six to eight Worthington Ave. So, Worthington is on the right side of that site plan. Route nine is just north of that. And Logan Substation is just south outside of that. There's ten integrated battery storage units towards the back of the parcel. And then, all the auxiliary equipment closer to the road.
So, just the area that's got the white rectangles?
Yep.
Okay. If this gets approved, when are you proposing to do it?
We expect it to be operational at the end of next year.
Are you anticipating if this proves to be a successful of what you're doing with some of the additional space here? Is there opportunity or consideration for expanding?
Yes. That's what the augmentation space is.
Sure.
So, if there's additional containers that would need to be added to hit those peaks better, then we can add more containers in that space.
What's the max, do you think, that you could have there?
Probably twenty, so double what is.
Sure.
outlined there.
Okay.
You said the fire department was okay with it?
We've had a few discussions with the chief, Colby. We've given him details about the mitigation measures, specific chemicals that are actually in these units that would basically put out any thermal runaway. There is a national fire code that would need to be met. We've also been talking to other utilities that are doing these projects and talking with their fire departments on what, on best practices. So, we're taking precautions seriously.
These are lithium batteries?
Correct, yep.
Did you say lithium?
Lithium, yeah.
Okay. Have any questions, comments?
No, I appreciate the preliminary plans. I understand that, you know, the full civil plans are coming for the, you know, for review. So, these are kind of the preliminary set. And we look forward to reviewing the full civil design, so.
Okay.
Are there any of these already installed in Massachusetts?
Uh, yes, there is one in Sterling. It's a pretty dated technology, though. It's a, basically a storage container filled with battery cells. That's not what this will be. These are dedicated, integrated battery storage units.
Yep. So, there's nothing like this installed in Massachusetts right now?
No. Shrewsbury would be one of the first with this technology.
Okay. So, the next time you come in, people are gonna be able to answer technical questions about these, right?
Yep, we'll have.
Safety of them in particular?
Yeah. So, we'll have someone from DeLorean Power. And then, we'll have someone from our own ops team that can discuss technical details.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Board?
This one, it actually kind of abuts the neighborhood that I live in. So, definitely safety would, like, you know, definitely a concern. So, let's see if we can, next time, like, have somebody answer the technical questions for, you know, because I know the batteries, if they do catch, they, they can explode and create some kind of a, you know. Other than that, it's a pretty good idea.
Yep.
Okay. Well, that's it. Are we all set?
Just public comment.
I know. Okay. Okay. This is a public hearing. Is, is there anybody like to be heard on this? Okay, yes. Okay. Could you come to the microphone when you speak, so people can hear you? And just.
By the way, I can hardly hear any of you. Hardly.
Really?
My question to you, is this on?
Yeah.
It is.
Could you state your name and address for the.
Paula Derry.
Okay.
I live at seventeen Worthington Ave. My husband has leukemia. I've looked up these battery facilities. They blow up. They emit toxic gases. Why was that, why is Selco choosing a neighborhood to put this facility in?
So, we anticipate the use to be very similar to our existing substation that is already there. And the thermal runaways are rare. And like I said, this, this is state-of-the-art technology that will have various precaution measures for that.
Would you like to live in that neighborhood? Would you like to live across the street limit?
Paula, could you address the question to the chair, please?
I'm new at this, obviously.
That's okay.
And I'm upset.
Understand.
Is this a done deal?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Did you want to finish?
I did get a letter in the mail.
Okay.
I assume that they want, you all want the neighborhood's opinion.
Yes, but I want to let him finish. Wait, I want to let him finish his answer to your question.
I think I've finished.
You're done? Okay. Okay. Did you have another question or a comment?
Were there other sites considered?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes, other sites are considered. We are planning to install additional storage facilities at those sites as well. So.
One at a time?
Correct.
So, my complaint is useless, really. Am I right?
I'm not sure.
No, the board will take all comments under advisement when they render their final decision, so.
If there is an accident, how is the Town of Shrewsbury gonna protect that neighborhood?
We'll, we'll ask those questions and we'll investigate those when we get into a more technical part of this hearing. This is just an introduction. We don't know.
Okay.
More about this than you do right now.
All right.
This is, there's gonna be a continued hearing on this.
All right. Another thing I'd like you to, will there be another hearing on this?
Yes.
So, so the request tonight is to continue. So, again, the, these plans are very preliminary in nature, as we had mentioned, that, you know, full civil design will be coming and will be produced. That's gonna have a lot more technical detail. Throughout this process, we also do consult with town departments, which includes the fire department, you know, building, which have a lot of the kind of safety measures and regulations. If there's any state codes that need to be applied for, that's all a separate process. But, you know, this project would have to comply with that. And that's part of what this process is, is hearing all those concerns and making sure that those are addressed. So, it's, it's an ongoing process. You won't receive any new letters for the hearing dates, but as you'll men, as you'll notice, when we do continue, it'll be to a time and date certain. So, at the end of this meeting, you'll know when to, when the next meeting and hearing will be. So, you can also always contact the Planning Department at any time, and we're happy to help facilitate communication.
Something else I'd like you to look into. What does one of these stations do to property value?
Property value unfortunately is one factor that the board cannot render in their decision, so.
Thank you.
You could ask, you could talk to the assessor. She'd be better able to answer that question than we could. Ms. Collins, can you get us a list of the different licenses and permits that you'd need besides what our board would, would have to issue?
Sure.
For in different agencies, whoever it is, by department, state, or whatever?
Sure.
So, because we don't have any other information right now.
Okay.
It would also perhaps be beneficial if DeLorean has other projects that are perhaps similar in size, or at least this type of technology, that they can provide some example so that we can kind of look at that in terms of kind of the impact that it's had on existing.
Sure.
Understanding that it's not necessarily, those projects are not necessarily in Massachusetts. They would most likely be in a different location, but at least if they're something of similar size, in technology-wise, that would be helpful to see.
Follow-up on the question, Ms. Derry asked. When you said other sites being considered, are they in addition to this, or either or?
In addition.
Okay. Just so we're clear on that. Okay. Any, anybody else in the audience like to be heard on this? Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Greg O'Connor. I own the duplex directly across the street from this facility at seven Worthington Avenue. I do have questions and concerns about this facility. One of my first questions is, why are we not having a special permit for a utility building that, or utility structure, which is over two hundred square feet? Why are we only doing a site plan review on this project?
The proposal is for a site plan and special permit.
Okay, that was not stipulated in the documentation that was sent out. It only said it was for site plan review.
On the application, it says site plan and special permit.
And what was listed? The ad was only for a site plan review.
That's, that's correct.
So, how do we, how do we correct that now? Do we start again at square one?
Yeah.
No, I mean, the application is, it's for a special permit and site plan review. I mean, there's a deficiency in the legal ad, but I don't think that that, that's a clerical error. I don't think it, we are reviewing this as a special permit and site plan. That's how it's noted on the agenda, so. It'll have to meet all of those criteria.
Okay. All right. Well, as long as we're clear that this is a special permit, because that has a whole different set of criteria that goes along with that, as you know.
Correct.
Okay. So, that being said, my next concerns are really some of the things that got alluded to, where we got an incomplete drawing. I own an architectural firm. I would love to walk in with something like this and get an approval, especially with the disclaimers on it, that everything is subject to change.
So, again, the, the application tonight, as, as has been presented, is there's already a request to continue. These are preliminary drawings. The full civil set is still forthcoming. This is just an introduction to the project.
It's a cute way to get a continue without everybody being here. I don't know if this was planned that way in strategy, but it's pretty clever. I don't know if this was planned that way in strategy, but it's pretty clever if it was, based on my 40 years' experience going before planning boards. Just to let you know.
A continuance is not an approval.
I know it's not an approval, but it's a cute way to not have really everybody apprised and have the time to review everything if they come in with a continuance, because you don't have to do 30 days with your, all your information available for public purview. So it's a cute way to get around that.
So this is, a continuance extends-
It does. It extends it.
So I haven't finished. So a continuance extends the time for review for an entire month.
Correct.
The next meeting.
Correct. But you don't have the public notice and the three weeks' time for those people who are not town employees or reviewers to actually get all that time to review and analyze the documentation.
The public notice has been issued. That was the legal notice that we discussed earlier.
Correct, but the problem is, the data that shouldn't, should have gone with it did not, because you have this drawing that has no information on it. So that, therein lies my issue.
Understood. And if any of the departments and, you know, if they need additional time to review, that's something they can request, and the Board could say that-
What about if me, owner across the street, wants additional time to have my professional folks review?
Ms. McClellan, I hear what you're saying.
Yep.
We'll try to deal with that as we go forward. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Because I was, I was, I was a little bit curious why we were starting when we didn't have all the information. I, I don't think it was as nefarious as you think it was, but I understand what you're saying.
Yep.
So, we'll talk about it internally, too. We can do-
Okay. I appreciate that.
I, there's, there's a lot of issues with this, and we'll, we'll make sure that they're covered.
Okay. I mean, I had a list of what a lot of these things are, but, you know, you guys know about the safety issues, the fire issues, you know. One of these facilities in the state of New York was burning for over a week. They couldn't put it out. They didn't know how to deal with it. It's state-of-the-art technology. It's state-of-the-art chemicals. The fire departments do not know how to deal with it. The fire codes do not know even how to deal with this yet. So using these codes that are antiquated for this type of technology really doesn't apply. So it's a very difficult thing to deal with. You know, we don't know really what, what type of alarm system, light toggle monitoring, what type of suppression, suppression systems. Can the apparatus fit? What is the emergency preparedness plan? What does that mean for the residences in the, in the area? As what is, you know, what are the criteria, the plan? The other thing about these facilities, my electrical engineering colleagues tell me there is a 24/7 noise factor with these facilities, and it's louder than a transformer, which would have been in the substation. So that is not something that you want in a residential neighborhood. You know, I know when we permit industrial facilities in residential neighborhoods, there are extremely difficult restrictions to adhere to for noise. And I think the Board needs to pay extra special attention to that in this case, because you have residences that are literally across the street from this facility. What about, you know, lighting and security? Is this place going to be, it functions 24/7? Is it lit up for security 24/7? You know, we don't want the place glowing all night long. That's got to be considered. I mean, you guys see this stuff come in front of you all the time. It's just the things that I know when I'm on the other side of the fence, these are the questions that we have to answer. My other concern with this is, where this is a partnership between the town, who actually owns this facility? Who do you go to if there's a problem? Can the town really deal with a problem? Because they don't actually own this facility? You've got this company that is a newly-founded venture capital firm that's only a few years old? Track record on venture capital firms is, most of them are gone in five years. Then what do you do? So, you know, I think that the other thing you're going to see when you guys look into regulations for these facilities, I know we've done a lot of facilities that have large generator plants, large solar plants as part of the facilities we've done. There are filings that require environmental impact statements as part of the filings for permitting at the state and federal levels. The problem with this facility is, these facilities are new. The regs may not have caught up with these facilities yet to get the appropriate type of environmental impact statements procured, which should be procured. So something else that the Board needs to be aware of.
Did you, let me ask you a question. Do you mean procured, or that they haven't been promulgated yet? They haven't caught up yet?
They haven't caught up yet.
Okay.
I mean, facilities similar to this are in the regs. These are required, but these are so new, the regs haven't caught up with this yet, but it's something that they will catch up with and should be done, because basically all these questions about safety, noise, light, sound, it's all environmental impact issues. And, and other facilities would be required to do full-fledged permitting with environmental impact studies. So, the other thing the Board wants to look at, which you folks alluded to, is where is there another one of these facilities? Well, as I started to mention, this company is new. 2019, 2020, they were funded with venture capital. They don't have many of these facilities yet. I tried to figure out if they had one in a residential neighborhood. I was not able to. I did find out they had one in an industrial neighborhood, which is really where these facilities belong, because of some of the issues that are associated with them, safety, noise, and all those things. So I really think Selco should think about some of these other locations, and if these other locations have expansion capabilities, they should think about putting these facilities in those locations, rather than where you have a residence. You know, I envision this more like in an industrial area on Route 20, as opposed to abutting a residential area. So that, I'd just like to thank the Board for listening to my two cents tonight. And I just really, you know, if this thing moves forward, I'd really like the opportunity to review it and have my colleagues, who do have expertise in this, also have the time to review before any of this moves forward. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
You mentioned noise.
Yes.
If it's a storage facility, where does that noise emanate from?
The batteries. They have a constant hum to them.
So they're being constantly charged?
They're, they're operational 24/7. They're, they're either charging or discharging. They're always on.
So there's a hum noise?
Yeah, it's, it's, think of a really loud transformer. There's always a noise.
Okay, thank you.
If I may speak to that briefly.
So, the batteries, I can actually give you some decibels. 58 decibels at 10 feet.
That's, a refrigerator is about 40 decibels, dishwasher is 70 decibels. The power conversion system is just shy of 80 decibels at 16 feet. So, it's, it's not very loud. I don't anticipate there being any lighting as well, as mentioned. And all, all these concerns are noted, and we will.
So if you're walking outside the building, with the building being closed, you don't hear it?
You will hear it. You will. Like I said, dishwasher and a refrigerator.
The, the comment about the power conversion?
A second, a second. These are going to be outside in their own enclosures, individual enclosures, right?
They're, yes, they're standalone, integrated.
Right, there's not going to be a building enclosed, okay.
Open air.
Okay, they're just going to have an enclosure around them.
Slate fence.
That's what I mean. The battery is going to have an enclosure around it. That's it.
Right.
Like a generator, maybe insulated, but that's it, right?
Right, there's no building structures.
Okay, so, all right. So there's no secondary means of isolating the sound?
There is not planned, no.
Okay. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
So, the comment about the power conversion units. We've done a couple of facilities with some large photovoltaic facilities, and converting that DC power. We're converting with rectifare units, and the test results say one thing on these, but there's a huge variation in these units when they show up to actually how loud they really can be. We actually had an experience with a unit where we had to go back, and we had to build a concrete block enclosure around the unit, because it came in significantly louder than the test results that came from the manufacturer. So you can't depend on these test results. It's kind of like an average number. They can be higher, lower, and you don't know which end of the spectrum you're going to end up on.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else up here before I open up again? Ask anyone else in the audience, please?
Yeah, my name's Chris Lund. Live at 235 Cherry Street. Not next to this property, but I have, as, my career, I'm a certified building official for the state of Mass. And I've known Mr. O'Connor and his plans. He's a highly respected and revered commercial architect in the state, and I value his opinion, and I'm happy to hear frankly that he is beside this unit location and has eyes on what's going on. But I want to also speak to this site plan approval that got pushed to public hearing, which was his initial comments. These site plans have to meet minimum standards before you present it to a public hearing. They should not have been approved to go in front of a public hearing. That is exactly what his point is. When he wants copies, we don't get notified now when there's a continuance. This public hearing, they should be revoked, and they should start over again with their entire plan set, meeting all the minimum standards for site plan approval, and to go in front of public hearing, so that these folks have an opportunity to review all those plans and make sure they meet the minimum standards, and then they can come back with proper comments, versus having to chase and make sure that they're staying vigilant with the hearings, and making sure they're requesting copies, unlike what the original intent of Planning Board Public Hearing was for. And I hope he sticks around for the proposed edits to your rules and regulations that I see that you're going to talk about tonight. So we're very curious what those are. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else like to be heard on this? Anyone in the audience like to be heard on this? Any additional comments? No? Okay, Ms. Collins, when are you going to be ready to come back?
Uh, November.
The November meeting?
Yep.
Ms. McGorrick, I think we should have a conversation with Selco, and I know, I can't write as fast as people can talk. I have a lot of information I think I'd like to see before they come back. I don't know how prepared they're going to be or not, but I think Mr. O'Connor raised a lot of good points. And I know I have a lot of good, maybe not good questions. I have a lot, I have a lot of questions myself, so I want to make sure that they're, they're well-prepared.
Yeah, so we did issue a preliminary comment letter. Obviously, given the preliminary nature of the plans, we didn't, you know, go through it as thoroughly. We're still waiting on the plans, but we did note many of the deficiencies. So, that was, you know, primarily a procedural matter, just to note, you know, that there's still a lot of information that we need, and to acknowledge that. Our department acknowledges that, and we're happy to proceed at the discretion of the Board. You know, we can, you know, the discretion of the Board is they can continue to the November hearing. What I'd just ask is that they also push the decision deadline, just to make sure that that's extended out. The other option, if the applicant so chooses, given that it's, they're targeting the November deadline, they could request a withdrawal without prejudice, which allows them to reapply. That would allow us to amend the legal notice, which would be sent out again. Obviously, there is some financial cost to them for re-advertising, but that would be on them if they would like to request that, given the timeline and the comments that we've had tonight, but.
That's not a decision you can make, is it, Ms. Collin, Collins? To be, I'm, to be honest with you, but I'm more inclined to ask for that. The second, especially where it's going to be two months.
Could it be something that comes to our October meeting, where, hypothetical here, Selco comes back before the Board and requests for a withdrawal, and then comes back, and comes back with the full plan advertised for the November meeting?
Yes, I mean, I guess it could be handled in tandem at the October meeting. So what they would have to do is they'd have to essentially reapply without having the withdrawal approved. So it's a little bit odd.
I guess, but I mean-
The timing notice requirements.
They could ask for the, in October, they could ask for it to be withdrawn. You could vote to withdraw it. They can have the application in the queue, and we can put it on November. We just, we won't even hear anything in October.
You, you would hear the withdrawal without prejudice?
Hear the withdrawal. That's it.
Right. But they would have to, they would have to apply for the-
They can apply, they could-
For the November hearing prior to that, probably prior to that.
We'll talk about it tomorrow. We'll figure out a way.
Quick kind of comment.
Yes.
Didn't they just do the withdrawal by sending you a letter now saying they're requesting a withdrawal? And at the next meeting, you just have to vote to approve?
We'll, we'll work it out.
Yes, so procedurally, we have opened the hearings, so the Board doesn't need to vote to authorize a withdrawal.
Right. We'll work it out.
Which we can't do at this evening's meeting. You'd have to do it at the October. Understood.
Right. We'll work it out. And we can take care of it in October. If we have to, we can schedule another meeting just to do that. Take 10 minutes, right? Okay. I think I'd feel a lot more comfortable than that. I mean, starting over. Okay. Anybody else like to be heard on this? No?
Can I make a motion to continue the public hearing?
Yes.
Second.
Till-
Till the October.
October 2nd at 7, 7:00 PM.
Correct.
The fellows in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Sorry, October 5th at 7:00 PM.
October's-
October 5th at 7:00 PM.
At 7:00 PM. Yep.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. That's it for tonight on this. Okay. All right. Next, items of new business, discuss the senior housing regulations. Ms. McGorrick, we're going to continue that till next meeting. The next item is to discuss CMIPC, local planning assistance memorandum. Ms. McGorrick?
Thank you. So, we received a memorandum from Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, which is our regional planning agency, noting that our local planning assistance hours, we have 12 hours available for use. What that is, is the volunteer hours that our members contribute to them. Comes back to us through those LPA hours. We can use those for projects, whether it's staff time or technical assistance. They have a variety of kind of capabilities that we do coordinate with them pretty regularly. So, just looking for ideas for those 12 hours. Do you want me to mention the-
Sure.
So, preliminarily, we've talked about some potential trail mapping that can be done using those hours, looking at essentially some of the overhead power lines with- using those hours, looking at essentially some of the overhead power lines with New England Power, and looking at actually mapping the trails that are in there and seeing if there's a possibility of utilizing those to connect some existing trail networks and gaps in the trail network. So some of that preliminary analysis, we may be able to use some of those hours towards that, but always looking for ideas of how we can apply those, those hours. It's a use them or lose them annually, so anything we can do is useful.
We can apply it to New England Power for permission to use the easements, what, you know, what trails across easements, but you have to map out where it will be, actually have to show it exactly on a map where it will be, and we could, we could use some of that money, time, CMRPC to use the GPS to map that out.
Mm-hmm.
So we were thinking that was something we could do, or we got to do it ourselves, so. Royals Committee trying to start on that, so it's one of the things we can use it for. Hopefully, it won't take 12 hours of time. Let's see, so, okay. So you found a way to use it every year anyways, right?
Yeah.
What have you used it in the past?
Um, I don't know in the recent, because I wasn't, wasn't here, but prior to that, I know a lot of times we use it for preliminary groundwork, kind of supplementing some of the work that planning staff does, just frees us up to take on other projects. I think we used it a lot for complete streets for the prioritization plan and developing that. We also had to get grant funding for that, but some of the kind of follow-up work for that. We really use it to fill gaps in services.
Sure.
But again, you know, using those 12 hours, if, having, having, you know, even if it's capabilities that we have, being able to apply it in a way that, you know, frees us up to take on other tasks is always useful, so there's no shortage of work.
Sure. Another suggestion, just, I mean, not having given it a great deal of thought, so it's a little half-baked in my mind right now, but obviously, I, it's a bit near and dear to me is kind of looking at the downtown or the town center, and I know that there was a number of different studies that were done down there, and, you know, I think there could potentially be opportunities to kind of dig back into those documents and see if there's opportunities for further expansion and/or implementation on some of the items. So just as another idea to throw out there.
Excellent.
I will spend your 12 hours, no problem. Don't worry about it. I can find it.
Next item is to discuss and vote on the appointment to the Complete Streets Committee. Planning Board needs to appoint somebody to the committee. The work on that kind of ebbs and flows. The applications are only every four years, so. You willing to give it a shot?
Sure.
Okay. We can change it if it becomes too much.
Okay.
Then we just keep putting it off until-
[laughing]
So we need to vote?
Uh, yeah, we do need to vote.
Want to nominate Ms. Holster? Okay, I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And see, this is when you can be a hero, so you're going to have to wait for it. You're going to have to wait for it now. Do you want to, do you want to mention North Quinsig-
Yeah, so-
-project that we just got a grant for?
So I'll give a little bit of background, so that, yeah, the Complete Streets Committee has been in existence for, for some time. It's actually recently reinvigorated prior to me coming onboard. I had worked on it very early stages when we did the Complete Streets policy back in 2016 and went through the prioritization plan. We're finally implementing those projects now. We were awarded a grant from Mass DOT in the amount, a little under $492,000 for improvements to pedestrian and bike infrastructure along North Quinsigam and Ave. So that's a significant award. We're really excited about that project. We have met with, did do an outreach meeting with that community, kind of discussing very preliminary design that the engineering department provided for us. We'll be working to develop more detailed engineering drawings now for the actual implementation, targeting the fall of 2024, next year, yes, for the actual construction. We'll be doing a lot of public outreach to kind of, as those design elements come to fruition, to engage the residents along that route and work on, on making those improvements fit the context of what they want to see as well, but-
Would you have a neighborhood meeting like?
Yeah, what we did is, you know, certainly for the outreach for the original one is we did letters directly to the residents on that, on that road and the section that would be improved, as well as doing our, our normal kind of social media news flash on the website and making a project page on the website so people can follow along.
So, so one of the big parts is closing in the gaps on the sidewalk?
Yeah, so there's a gap in the existing sidewalk. This will close that gap essentially from, from Main Street all the way to Route 9. There's some existing, I forget the streets, the crossroads that it connects to, but primarily from the Donahue Rowing Center all the way down to, I believe it's the Eagle Terrace Apartments, I believe is what it's called. So that, that general area, it'll provide sidewalk, five-foot asphalt on one side, and then narrowing the drive lanes to provide the shoulders that will double as bike lane infrastructure and be restriped. So just by narrowing the one foot of the, the drive lane, you're able to, to get the significant bike lanes in there, improves that bike infrastructure, and then hopefully slows the traffic on that road as well, which is one of the concerns that we anticipated, so.
Would you have to issue new speed limits?
Uh, wouldn't be new speed limits, but I think the, the narrowing of the drive aisles typically is a traffic calming measure, just by kind of narrowing the, the driving lane that people are in, they tend to slow down a little bit in terms of the, the actual speed limits. It's more DPW's realm, and I know there's a process that they have to go through to, to do that, and I'm not as familiar with that, but they're obviously doing the design for us, so if that's an opportunity, I'm sure they'll look at it.
Great.
Okay, good.
Excellent.
Okay, next order of business is to discuss and vote to issue a bond for 42 to 44 Baudet Drive. Mr. McGorick, that's, that's Valmat, right?
This is Valmat, yep.
It's a small amount, $396, some road they got, some work they have to do in the road.
Correct, yep.
So we just need-
For the utilities, yep.
To vote to approve the bond, right?
Yep, and the, and sign it.
Yep. So we have a motion to vote to approve and sign the bond for 42 to 44 Baudet Drive?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, okay. Next item is to review proposed edits of the, to the rules and regulations, the site plan approvals and special permits. We're going to hold that, we have a full board, so that'll, we'll hold it till next week, right? I mean, next meeting.
Correct, yep.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, just given a comment from the gentleman earlier, I just want to note what that is in relation to. Those are in relation to the online permitting system that we have. So we've moved to the fully paperless online application portal. What this is doing is just updating those regs to point to that and adjust the language to allow the online permitting rather than referencing all the paper permitting forms.
Sure.
Those red line edits have been provided to the board, and we're happy to provide them to the public if they'd like to review it as well.
Okay. Okay. Next item is to discuss and vote on the bond release for Glendale Ave. Mr. McGorick, come, which is that for?
Uh, so the Glendale Ave new bond is for $21,527.65. Engineering has been consulted on this, and they did do a site visit, all of the work as well as the as-built drawings have been provided, and they have no additional work that needs to be bonded, so.
Okay.
They're in favor of a bond release.
So we need to vote to release the bond?
To issue the bond release, correct.
Okay. Do you have a motion for that?
Motion to release the bond.
Second.
Okay, great motion, second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So voted. We need to sign that one, too?
Yep.
And next item is to, the way I wrote my notes, I'm going to jump ahead if I don't be careful. The next item is to discuss and vote to release the technical review fees for 378 Maple Avenue Site Plan Approval. That remaining balance is $13,362. All that work is done, we can vote to release and, sign and release that.
Correct, yeah, so the, the technical review fees are in relation to the project, which is substantially complete at this point, and we don't anticipate additional technical review needed.
Okay.
Could certainly replenish it if we needed to.
So I could obtain a vote to release the technical fees and sign a release?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next item is to review the MBTA zoning memo. Not ready, you're just going to touch on it?
Yeah, so what I'd like to do is I'd, you know, given the MBTA zoning, we anticipate doing a lot of public outreach for this and really developing zoning in collaboration with the public. What I, what I'd like to do is hold this as an item that we have running on the agenda just as we provide updates. It's one of the, one of the situations where the guidance and the kind of final compliance models are still a little bit in flux with the state. They're issuing new guidelines. Just a few weeks ago, we received an update that they're allowing some commercial activity to be included with these where originally was not allowed to, to do mixed use. So as those kind of guidelines change, we kind of shift our strategies, which is partially why I don't have a memo prepared for tonight, but I'd like to, to kind of keep that. I do intend to issue a memo to the select board to get on their agenda and just discuss that more publicly. We'll be looking at the outreach plans that we have prepared as well as some preliminary strategies that we'd like to review with the public. So certainly it's, you know, zoning that is important. It is tied to funding from the state, a significant amount of funding that we do receive through grants that we would not be eligible for if we are not in compliance. We do have till December of 2024 to pass zoning that is compliant. Given the nature of it, we'd like to target the May town meeting, just gives us one, one more crack at it in, in the fall if we need to adjust, because it's, it's one of those you have to pass it and then they tell you if it complies, so.
Right.
So that gives us a little bit of time.
And they're still tweaking it, right?
Right, it's, it's a little bit of a moving target.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we'd like, we'll work with everyone to get that.
Anything else? Any questions on that?
No.
Okay. We have anything on the old business?
Nothing, nope.
Correspondents, we had one thing, we had a, an email regarding the Selco's application on that site plan approval and special permit, so we'll just acknowledge that we got that and hold it. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Oh, excuse me.
Correspondents?
Yep.
Do you have anything I have? We don't have any other correspondence.
All right, well, let me, let me introduce myself. I'm Hank Moyarty. I'm on the Board of Trustees of Lake Street Estates, and this is attorney Carl Afram, who's also on the board.
Yeah.
And I'll-
Excuse me for a second. We don't have anything on the agenda, right?
All right, let me look at, I may have missed it.
All right, I'll give you a couple of minutes.
All right.
It's right on the agenda, so.
Okay. So I'm, I'm going to turn it over to Carl shortly, okay, but I'll just, long story short. So we're a 25-unit, 55-plus community off of Lake Street, and the developer for the project is Jim Haynes, and he has a bond with the town of Shrewsbury. It's not very much money, little less than $12,000, but we're here tonight, and Carl will talk to this further, but we're here to, tonight to get some guidance relative to closing out this project, okay? 25 units, everybody's moved in, everybody loves their places, except that the developer has not completed all the tasks for us to close out this, this project, okay? And so I'm going to, I, you know, I'll give you copies of the outstanding items that the developers have-
I don't think we can accept that.
Can't.
Can't accept that, but, yeah, so, so I apologize. This is actually, this is my fault. We had had some back and forth on this communication, and I did indicate that I would put it on the September 7th meeting, so I apologize for not-
No worries.
-following through on that. So from our, from our last email, I just want to kind of address, so this is in relation to the, the bond that's existing and looking to pull that. I, I've been working with staff to generate a summary of work to be completed for the project, and then once we have that, we can reach out to the developer to get their response on finishing that work. I, I don't have that summary of work yet, but once it's, once it's developed, I'm happy to, to share it, but.
You can't accept that now, right?
No, the summary of work from the, from our engineering department, not from-
You want this?
I mean, I'll, I'll take it, but-
You can't accept it at a meeting, it's not on the agenda.
All right. All right. I don't know what rules-
You can mail it in.
My first time.
Email it in. If you email it to the office, but we can't take it at a meeting because it's not on the agenda.
All right, but you, you got the ball on this, right?
I do.
All right.
Okay. What is it, performance bond?
Yeah, so it's the, the bond, and they're looking to see-
The road?
Uh, what the, what the town can do to, to pull the bond on the project, as the developer has-
To get the work on.
But is the bond for the road?
Uh, the bond is for, yeah, the, the bond would be for the road, and again, that's why I want to make sure that I get-
Okay.
A full-
Sure.
Full scope of the work from the engineer-
We're going to look into it, we can throw it on October's?
Yep.
Yeah, I would just say, before Carl takes over, I'd just say one thing. The biggest item on there is, he owes us eight streetlights. We don't have any streetlights. It's, it's two streets, Abbey Lane, Peyton Place, off of Lake Street. We don't have any streetlights. We got a, you know, we got a lot of elderly people, so.
Okay, we'll have them look into it, but it's not on the agenda, so we can't do anything.
Well, we, we understand it's not on the agenda. What we'd like to do is make certain that we get it on and that we get-
Going to put it on for the October meeting.
... appropriate process from here on in, okay? That's all, at the present moment, that's all that we-
We'll put it on the October meeting.
Okay.
October meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, good, and you have our letter, and that'll be on the meeting, and then we'll see you there in October.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Nice to meet you all.
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
All right, Carl, we're out.
Okay.
Yeah, you can keep calling it's up.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So voted. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, how many things- How many things?